Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming down. I know there's been considerable conversations about the Distinguished Educators Report. Our goal was to have the opportunity to digest that report. The thought was that in order to be thoughtful and provide a meaningful response, it was best that we take the time to read what is actually a very lengthy and extensive report. So I want to thank you for being patient. I know I got calls. I assume my colleagues got many calls regarding this. And I want to thank my colleagues for taking the time to think about this before us speaking publicly. And let me just say on this point of speaking publicly, we are a board of seven very powerful, thoughtful, committed people. We have divergent ideas. I think actually that's an asset. And you may find, as we discuss this report, and I encourage you to talk to anybody you want, ask them questions you want, I'm going to tell you, though, in advance of your having that dialogue with them, that there may be some divergent views. This is an extensive report with a lot of different recommendations. That's the beauty of a democracy. I have said to my colleagues, I'm going to be totally transparent, this is not an opportunity to debate. This is an opportunity for people to express their views about a very significant report and for you to ask questions about that. But I'm not going to respond to questions from my colleagues, and I hope they show me the respect that I will show them and not ask me questions about a particular position that I take. I think what was really helpful is if you hear our views, some of them may be consistent, some of them may be different. I do want to, before we engage in that process of hearing what we thought of the report, I do want to tell you, generally speaking, what the process is going to be to vet this very important document. You all know already that the response, the district's response as a body, is due in February. Of course, we're going to meet that deadline. This report was months in the making. The commissioner was generous to give us an ample amount of time to prepare a response, and we will do that. I want to tell you generally how that process will unfold. No final decisions have been made. This is the first time, actually, the board has met as a group to discuss the report. But generally speaking, our plan would be to meet first to discuss the report as a group. Some board members could obviously not be here today. So we'll meet to discuss that, the report. We'll probably do that within the next week. It'll be the first opportunity for us to discuss the report. In terms of how we will respond by February, I've had an opportunity to speak to our superintendent, Barbara Dean-Williams. Her plan is to methodically go through that report, section by section. My understanding is she has divvied it up to responsible departments. For example, as you know, there's a section on administration. Our very able and very informed Mike Schmidt and his team will go over that section, respond to those recommendations, and so on. So with each section, the administrative team here at Central Office will go through those sections and come up with a response, which of course, our superintendent will vet herself personally. There's a substantial part of the report that is dedicated to the Board of Education, or what we call governance. Now, not all of it in that section related to governance is about the Board of Education, but make no mistake about it, there is significant dialogue about governance. And the Board of Education will meet and discuss that element of the report. Essentially, though, eventually what will happen is, again, this is generally how this process should unfold, the board has to ultimately make a decision. We'll have to synthesize what Barbara's team has done and what our team has done in terms of things that we're responsible for. And I want to say, with respect to our responsibility in our report, we have, as you, many of you may know, a very able team members. Some of them are here today. They will help us understand what our response should be to that report. But eventually, we'll have to take Barbara's team, a very capable, informed team, and synthesize what they have done with our team. And then the board, and Barbara, as a team of eight, will decide what that response should be to the commissioner. And again, there's no doubt in my mind that we will be able to come up with a response that is meaningful and powerful to provide to the commissioner in a timely fashion. I'd like to, with my colleagues' permission, to begin my own observations about this report. And I will be very brief, because I realize there's probably questions that you may put to any one of us. Two observations I make about this report. The first one is that I think he makes, that is, the distinguished educator, makes some critical comments, important comments, about curriculum and our need to assess where we're at in terms of how we deploy for our staff what our children should learn. That's the first observation. So I think those observations and suggestions that he makes are worth the board and the administration looking into. Secondly, and these are just two things, I'd probably talk about many others. Second is budget. You can't teach if you don't have the money to teach the kids in the classroom. This is going to be very, very challenging. This morning, I was at an event. Somebody said, "Well, you know, don't you think you have too much fat at Central Office?" I don't believe that's true, but I can tell you this. The administration, with board approval, recently hired more people to help us in the area of special education, a real need in this community. And that meant more administrators were here locally, and that meant more money is being spent at Central Office. So it's very easy to say, "Oh, you've got too much fat at Central Office." And I would just say, we are, as a team, going to really need to look at, and we talked about this the other day when we were talking about budgetary priorities, we're going to need to look at that. And then I'll make one other global observation about this report. And again, none of this is up for debate. These are just my observations, as I'm sure that my colleagues may have some of these opinions or may not share in them. I think, and I'm going to be honest with you, I think for a report that alleges that people are not focused on children, but rather are focused on adults, I'm going to be honest with you, and this is not for debate, please, the methodology was erroneous. The methodology was, they spoke to adults, and only adults. That's my first criticism. And by the way, if you take the praise, and I have some items which I think are worthy of praise, I think you have to be willing to accept, as we must, criticism. The other area that I'm a bit concerned about is, if you really want to focus the conversation on children and not adults, the best way, in my humble opinion, and I realize that reasonable people might disagree, is to focus on data. Because adults can have subjective observations. But if you look at the data, which by the way, many of you were there this morning, Rock the Future, the report, was based on data. If you look at data, and much of our data is not good, so I'm not just saying, "Look at data, because it will show positive signs." I think if they had spent Dr. Aquino, who, again, let me just say, I think he's been very transparent, very open, I enjoyed working with him, I will continue to enjoy working with him. But again, if he's going to be willing to have us accept his honest assessment, I believe it is genuine, it's based on his experience, he and the commissioner must be equally willing to listen to our concerns and observations. And my, I've identified a couple of things I thought were very positive about the report, where we could really focus on. The other concern I have is that it's not data-rich. That is the best way to objectively assess whether we're servicing kids effectively or not. And I'll give one example of that. You all will hear very shortly that we have eight schools in receivership, eight schools in receivership. All eight of them, by the data, not by what adult reported, but all eight, have made their performance objectives, right? That's a program, that's an initiative led by folks in this building that is working. I think that's the best way to ensure the reliability of your observations go to data. So when we respond, I hope that our response is not based on opinion or gut, but on the data. And I hope we will put forth the data that says it's not working, and there's a lot that's not working in this district. But we will also be honest and encouraging enough for our colleagues to point out those things which, by the data, are working. I don't know if you want to go this way?
Yes, you want. Yeah. Will it go?
Okay.
Thank you.
So my reaction to Commissioner Ilya's characterization that it was adults, addressing adult concerns and adult issues, misses the mark also. The board has decided one of our values is to always assume positive intent. And while I might not agree with every, and I don't agree with every decision everyone in this institution has made, I start with the assumption that behind their action, behind their decision, is a concern for a child or a group of children. And so although the actions might appear to be adult-centric, we don't know that, and we cannot know that, because we cannot know what is in the hearts and minds of every person I also am a little concerned about something that Dr. Aquino said in an interview, not something that's written in the report, per se, where he said that there's nothing in the report that suggests the district needs more money. I'm paraphrasing, I probably have it wrong. But my reaction to that, whether I got that right or not, is that is correct, that the items that Dr. Aquino pointed out and delineated bullet by bullet are not solved by money. That does not mean that the district would not benefit from more money, that the children in this district wouldn't benefit from more resources, and that we should stop advocating for full foundation formula that the state had agreed upon back in 2007. And it is still part of the state law, although ignored at budget season by the state. I could say more, but I'll let the questions prompt it. Thank you.
Yeah, so for me, you know, I really have to be realistic. I know that Dr. Aquino came in with a very specific goal in mind, and he has been a great asset to us, but reading the report, there wasn't anything that was shocking. The recommendations were all things that I felt, you know, that's something that we can move in that direction. What I was concerned about after reading it, though, was what was not in the report. I was hoping that we would talk more about what does it mean to have a district that has systems of accountability. We throw the word around a lot. The report did reflect on some of the findings of why we have some issues in our district around accountability, and I was hoping that the report focused more on the reasonings behind that. And so for me, when I say that, is really our contracts, our unions, the way that we are able to get ineffective workers out of our district, or put them in roles where they would be most effective, is bound up in the contracts that we have with our unions. And I was hoping that this report would shed more light on that, to give us a little bit of a basis to say that, okay, well, the state has come in and looked, and the state is backing us on that. And so what does that mean for us, because it wasn't in the report? Is that we, as a board, we have to get bold, we have to be very bold in what we're going to do next in regards to that. And we have to make a decision as a collective if we're going to be talking about accountability, if we're going to be talking about what is going to make this system run, regardless of who is sitting in these seats on the board, is that if we do put a system in place, we have that flexibility to say, you know, based off of data, like President White said, you're not performing, we need you to perform as so that our kids are achieving excellence, then, sorry, you have to see the door. And that, you know, that's the most respectful way that I can put it, because at the end of the day, if we are focusing on students, and our students are not achieving, which in the report is said, grades three through eight, 90% of our students, they need academic intervention, 90% of our kids, third grade through eight, they need academic intervention. And that's an issue, and that is a crisis, and it's something that we need to address. And you can't sit here and tell me that our kids can't learn, that our kids, they need all of these extra hands-on just to make it to a certain point. I reject that notion wholeheartedly, and I feel that our teachers and our staff and our administrators, they have a responsibility in that, and so do we. As upper-level management, we have a responsibility to make sure that our administrators, our teachers in our buildings, are getting to our students in a manner that they are able to achieve. And so that's just one area, you know, we've had a short amount of time to read through it. There's many more notes that I've taken, I don't know them off the top of my head, so I know we'll have more discussions in the future. But that was one very glaring thing that I pulled out of the report.
So for me, I actually, I don't want to go back and forth with President White, but I do reject the notion that it was not data-rich. I think there was a 60-page summary, but there's, the report in its entirety is about 300 pages. It includes data from previous consultants that the district has spent money on to tell them about different systems that are not functioning, including special education. And it's interesting that you would use data as a reason to say that the report is not thorough enough, because I've addressed data issues along the way, including EOL data, including the budget data, the numbers, and have been ignored as a new commissioner along the way when we discuss these things. And so when they talk about the board dysfunction, I think you can see that, and the fact that we have three new commissioners versus four. I think that the board collectively sometimes has forgotten what their role is as a commissioner and have become gatekeepers to some of the dysfunction in this district. And I wholeheartedly agree 100% that we don't focus on our kids. And I brought this up in the September and the October budget board meeting, when we discussed the fact that we had two departments that gave themselves raises when we have a deficit in the district. And when the board decided to uphold those raises, instead of holding people accountable, because that's another lack, we lack ethics and accountability in this district, too, that was the board's opportunity to hold people accountable, and they failed to do so. So I appreciate the Distinguished Educators Report. I understand that there have been consultants who have echoed some of the same things in this report, but I will distinguish him as a different type of consultant. His job here is to work with Commissioner Ilya and the state directly, and even though we pay his salary, he does not work for the school board, and he does not work for the superintendent.
Any questions?
Ben, it's one of the things that is said in the report was that the board needs to ask itself the question, why you can't keep a superintendent around. What do you think about that?
Well, I think you've heard me say this before, Justin. If you look at the national research on this subject, very briefly, the Brookings Institute indicates, and I'm paraphrasing, a very clear report, but the data is there, that the length of a superintendent's tenure, whether it's urban or suburban, has no impact on performance outcomes. Now, you might say, "Oh, my God, that can't be right." Well, but if you think about your experience as an adult, as parents, or as aunts and uncles, you know that you have the greatest impact. The closer you are to the children, the more impact you're going to have. So parents, of course, would have a great impact, and the research, the data tells us that. Teachers have a great impact on our students, because they're literally closest to our students. And then, of course, principals, and then chiefs. But I would say to you, Justin, superintendents are very far away, and the data shows, the research shows, that they do not impact results. Now, that's the national data. What is our data? We've had, I'm reminded of this all the time, we've had three superintendents over the course of the last seven years or so, and what have we seen? Two interims and two permanents. What have we seen? The graduation rate has steadily risen, even though we've had different superintendents.
So you're talking about the impact, and that's fine, but he's saying whether they stay around for a short time or a long time, why aren't they staying around for a long time?
Well, let me just attack one of your assumptions. You can check on Wikipedia, wherever you want to check, the data. Bohan Vargas was here a total of four and a half years. Clifford Janey was here, I think, six or seven years. I'm sure you'll check this. Between Manny Rivera I and 2.0, he was here seven or eight years, right? So then you have some interims, which I'm sure you would not include in your assessment of the interims. One of them, regrettably, sadly, had a stroke. No one could anticipate that. So by and large, if you add up our permanent superintendents, Barbara is, she'll serve a total of two and a half years. By and large, and you know this, because you've done your research, again, I encourage you all to look at the data. Urban superintendents nationally, depending on the study that you're talking about, they last for about three years. That's throughout the country. I know some reports say a little more, a little less, but on average, it's about three years. So if you look at our permanent superintendents, they exceed the national average, and Barbara, I would concede, is under that. But let me say this, having said the data, again, I would encourage you to always look at the evidence. I would say, I would love to have a superintendent who would stick around, notwithstanding the data, but it's got to work for the superintendent, and it's got to work for the board, and it's got to work for the community. I'm going to say something that is probably going to shock you all. It wasn't working. Let's just be honest, right? It wasn't working. I hope that's refreshing to you. It wasn't working. So you don't let kids and adults, I don't care who your focus is, suffer if something's not working. I think it's pretty clear, it wasn't working. So she stayed two and a half years. All of our other superintendents stayed far in excess of that. It's focusing on the adults. So I sort of twist it back to you. It would be irresponsible for us, not with saying the fact we have a good track record for keeping superintendents here. It would not be responsible for us to keep a superintendent here, just because we like the look of it, especially when the national data from Brookings Institute says it doesn't impact the outcomes. It's what she does. It's what she does. And they're even further away from it than our principals and our parents and our teachers.
Okay, so superintendent, you're saying not an issue, the national average. So what is the issue? Because I've heard from the report yesterday, from people today, from teachers, none of this is new. So if it's not new, why is this all still an issue?
Yeah, so, you know, in the report, I don't remember what it said verbatim, but I know that it made some type of reference to the notion that we can't keep superintendents here in the district just because of the relationship that the board might have with the superintendent. And that's something that I do want to address, is that people have to be realistic. This is not board against superintendent. We're supposed to be a team, and by state law, we are a team. And unfortunately, we do get superintendents that come in that feel that the board is micromanaging, but when we have so many different things that are going awry in our district for individual board member, I'm not going to have hands-off. Like, we're talking about kids' lives, and if I see something over here, something over there, something over there, I'm going to be all over it to make sure that the superintendent that we hire, because they are our employee, is on top of things. So when you have Commissioner LeBron saying that, in the report, it talks about these issues have been brought up years and years before we even got here, right? And we're still talking about the same things. You have to really think about, why are we still talking about the same issues and still trying to correct them? I do think that we, as a board, we have different notions on what our actual role is, which it also mentions in the report. And for me, and I proudly stand by the fact that I do believe that my role is to be hands-on until I can be hands-off. I'm not going to compromise on that. I hope that the next superintendent comes in, understands that we are a team, and so it's not the board having hands-on to restrict you in any kind of way. We have a set of skills that we bring to the table, and so we all need to be respected in that fact. And sometimes, superintendents don't like that, because they do want to have autonomy. And for me, I'm just not going to be that type of commissioner.
Let me be clear, sorry, I meant this is still an issue, as in problems within the district, with services and things like that. I don't mean that the superintendent turnover being an issue. If a lot of the things in the report are not new issues, why are those still?
So can I actually address that? Because I do think that, again, like I mentioned, that there have been other consultants previously hired. I think one is the lack of stable leadership within the superintendent, because it's not just the superintendent, it's the deputies, it's the chiefs, it's that mid-management piece of it. With the turnover of a superintendent comes that turnover, too. But the board has to own this as well, because I've said this to the board before, I don't care who is the superintendent, the board has historically remained the same for a number of years, and it has had some stability, minimumly 12 years, I will say that, of the same, some of the same individuals, at least four. So what I will say is that the board has to own that, too, because no matter who's here, there should be goals and directives and a vision for this district that gets implemented, no matter who the face of the superintendent is. And that is lacking in the school board right now. We don't have a clear direction of where the district is going and where it should go. And I have been a very adamant non supporter of the path forward, saying that it's a public relations gimmick, and I stand by that today. And we still don't have a path forward, a concrete plan of where this district needs to go. And I do hope that we take the recommendations from Dr. Aquino and get that plan developed through those recommendations.
As I sort of pass the mics back, let me just say that I think this might be somewhat of an unusual event for some of you all, to see four board members speaking their mind. I want you to look at this as a very enriching, positive thing. Now, Commissioner LeBron and I, as you can see, we don't agree on a lot of things, but that's what makes a democracy effective. I will say, she may not realize this, and I said I wasn't going to do back and forth, but it's giving me this one pass, I will say that, you know, when I got sworn in at Number 50 School, where I attended this child, the four-year, people, forget this, the four-year graduation rate was 39%. Only 39% of our kids graduated in four years. So the things that she's railing against and that my colleagues are railing against, I took on the mantle, I took the baton in the same way, but actually, the graduation rate was worse. But to your point, I just refuse to see things as constantly the glass is half-empty. I think the glass is not full, but it's not where it was. And what do I mean by that? We are now graduating 59% of our kids. Now, nobody's saying mission accomplished, don't get me wrong, and nobody's saying that things are cool and fine. I'm not saying that. We now have an appreciable, significant decrease in out-of-school suspensions. You all know what that means for a child who's been kicked out of school because the color of her skin is brown, right? That's meaningful, right? But let me say the point that I think we all can agree to. I don't agree with the governance model, and this is, I think, something what Commissioner Shepherd was saying. I don't agree with the governance model that says that board members sit on their hands and wait for direction. It's not going to surprise any of you. Sit on their hands and wait for direction. I think we did that for far too long. And when I became president, it became abundantly clear that that business-as-usual was not going to be the case. I'm with people who are frustrated with our results, but I want you to know, for those of you who don't like the glass-half-empty, glass-half-full analogy, try this for you sports fans, football fans. We are moving the chains. We are not in the red zone, we have not scored, but we are moving the chains. And for anybody who's a fan of football, who, anybody's watched a game from the sidelines, you want to see the chains move. You want to score, but you want to see the chains move. And if you look at the graduation rates, if you look at the fact that eight of those schools are not in jeopardy of going into intense receivership, if you look at the declining number of kids who are receiving out-of-school suspensions, you'll say, because that's data, the chains are moving.
Just as you are looking for the positives out of this report, I want to highlight an aha moment that I had. Dr. Aquino's report pointed to our success in pre-K, and the model is predicated around recap process, which is an evaluation process that ensures that all of our pre-K programs are applying the same foundational standards. Now, when Mary Adams was here on the board, and was only for three years, she was a strong advocate for applying that recap process to our kindergarten, first, second grade. And she's not here anymore, so that concept is ceased to have a champion for the last nine, 10 months. And when I read that assessment about the success of pre-K and recap, my aha moment was, ah, I need to be a champion for making the recap process, rolling the recap process out to K1 and 2. Why does it need a champion? Because the administration isn't embracing it. It needs a board champion, preferably a board majority championship, preferably a unanimous board championing it. Yes, it's going to cost money, that kind of evaluation costs money, but it yields results, and it yields the results in the grades that matter most, when children are learning to read, they're beginning their numeracy skills. So even if I disagree with major portions of the report, I am thankful for that report that it pointed out that the answers are right here in front of us, and have been in front of the long-term professional educators, as well as boards who are old and new, right? So I think we need to focus on the gems in that report that actually guide the way to a profound shift and improvement in our district.
Just what I asked your reaction to the Distinguished Educators reset. I mean, are you minimizing the death of the problem in this, when she's calling for a complete reset?
That's taken out of context, if you don't mind saying. That's one sentence in one paragraph on page three of a 60-page report. I don't think that he intended for the reset to be applied to the entire district. He wasn't saying, "Throw the bums out, replace the superintendent and the entire cabinet," and- and, and fire all your, that is not what he, that report was saying. So, we need to look at that sentence in its context.
Can I just add, though, even some of the responses? Because part of Dr. Aquino's report is that often in this district, there are emotionally-driven, as he called, crisis du jour soup, right? So, there's a reaction, that something happened, and so even, and no disrespect to Commissioner Powell, this is my observation, I personally am a realist, so yes, the glass is half-full, half-empty, but we would not have a distinguished educator if our district wasn't in the disarray that it's in. So that's the reality of our situation. So I don't, it's not to take away from the good things, but if we had enough good things happening, we would not have had a distinguished educator appointed by the state. But even saying that we need to champion something that, that's, that moment right there, for me, as the new commissioner coming in, is part of what he, that he talks about when we say emotionally-driven decisions. Saying, making a statement like, it's going to cost money, well, we don't have the money. We have a deficit and a budget crisis that we're facing this upcoming budget year. And even though I've been saying, I've been talking about it all year long, I'm personally grateful that it's in the distinguished educators' report. The CAFR is coming out today, it's going to make some highlights in there about just how bad we are financially. And next month in audit, our external auditors will give us their final report on that. But it's those types of things. And I will encourage everybody here in the media and those watching to research the history of pre-K prior to their involvement with Rochester City School District. They have a strong, solid foundation, they came into the district with that strong, solid foundation. And I personally, I know some of the history, I was involved on ECDI for a number of years, advocating for early childcare development. I don't want us to necessarily take credit, but the individuals that are there should have, should take the credit for the work that they've done pre their relationship with the district. The other thing I will say is that the state does an incredible job at childcare regulations, and early and UPK regulations, that are very stringent and strict. And perhaps that's something that the state can look at, moving from K through 12, is aligning some of those regulations so that they are more strictly enforced, as they are in UPK. So I just want to throw those things.
And I, I do want to respond to, to your question. So, you know, I don't know what Dr. Aquino meant when he said that, but I can tell you how I feel I read it, and what I, what I've observed, is the fact that even if we wanted to get rid of everybody, I'm, I'm very radical like that. I just, if it's not working, we got, it's got to go today because we have kids in our seats today. So, if we're not going to go that route, I do think what he meant by resetting is the fact that we have to be realistic about changing the culture in this district. And if we're going to talk about changing the adults' behaviors, the adults, the employees, because we have a lot that are doing their job correctly, but the ones that are not performing to the level that we need them to perform at, when I talk, when I hear "reset," I'm thinking that, listen, you either change your behavior, make sure that you're achieving these goals, or you have to go. Like, it's frustrating me to always have to go back and forth with the same adults, same groups of people, we're just shuffling them around the district, and then we're surprised that now over here, we have crises. I mean, just over there, they were not performing correctly. And so for me, when I, when I hear "reset," you know, I would like to see ineffectiveness of goal, but if that means that we have to change behaviors, again, accountability is more than a word. We have people that are afraid to write employees up, we have people that are afraid to counsel. You can't, you can't always fix things with professional development. You got to let staff know that if you're not performing, your job is in jeopardy. I don't know what else could get a person to change their behavior, a talking to, we know is not going to work. And so, that's what I think, when he said "reset," that he's talking about those types of bold moves that we just have to make. And it's not to say that we're trying to tear people down, that, that's, that's not where I'm coming from. But the fact of the matter is, is we're responsible for 30,000 kids. And if we don't do right by them in K through 12, when they get out of our, our system and out of our hands, guess where they're going? Right back into our communities to do what? So, I do think that we have to get stronger and more bold as, as a board.
And if that's step one, that you kind of talk about, kind of being radical, maybe getting rid of the folks and holding people accountable, would you guys agree? What's step one? I mean, we're talking a lot about you guys meeting in the next coming days and focusing on kids, but what's step one after that meeting, to make sure that those kids are learning and doing what needs to be happening in those classrooms?
For me, step one would be, you know, I don't want to disrespect anybody's religiously, but a come-to-Jesus conversation. Because we have some new board members that are, you know, on one side of the fence, others on the other, and I think that we need to really come together and say, okay, listen, this is it. We have one chance to get this right, and then it's over. And if we, as a collective board, cannot come to that, that agreement, that we're going to be bold, we're going to make tough decisions, people, we're going to get backlash, all of that is going to come, we have to be prepared, I think that's the first step, is having a come-to-Jesus, Jesus conversation. But right after that, is a plan, because like President White said, we have until February, that's right around the corner. And it's right as our budget season starts, so we really have to get on the ball. So those are the first two steps that I think are, are immediate.
Natalie, can I ask you a question? I'm going to read some of these recommendations. Ensure that the board has a clear understanding of its role as a governing body. Develop written guidelines that define the board's common understanding of governance as opposed to management. Ensure that the board understands that its role is supportive and respectful of the role of the superintendent. He's, he's talking about y'all, and he's talking about, in particular, what you just said, that, you know, we have to get up, we can't sit on our, on our hands. And as you know, these aren't exactly recommendations, it's more like this is what you're going to do. Do you anticipate there being tension there?
Yes, I definitely do think that there'll be tension there, naturally so. I think people want to feel like they can move the way that they want to move without having someone pulling them in different directions. And the fact of the matter is, right now, is that the board, we are very strongly opinionated individuals. And so, if we look at this thing from all these different perspectives, we really do have some, some work that we have to do together to make sure that the message that we're giving out is one that incorporates everything that we wanted to incorporate, and not just half the board, or this person, or that person. And so I do hope that we can get to that point, but I do think that there's going to be major tension there, because right now, we do not see eye to eye on that.
Let me just say, without even the necessity of moving the mics, I agree. And, you know, this is not going to shock you, Justin. I think people have a conception about what boards do, and I realize that I, and Natalie, and maybe others, are in the minority. I understand that. And I understand, and I appreciate the fact that that can cause, and has caused tension.
But this isn't people have a conception, this is the distinguished educator.
No, but, well, let me just say to you, Justin, I would disagree, and the commissioner could disagree with me too. I don't think there's anything that compels us to do any of that. Now, I've got to tell you, in advance of reading the report thoroughly and discussing with my colleagues, I think most of this stuff is doable, right? I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I can't do item for item, but I can tell you, a lot of this is happening, should happen, and if it doesn't, I think we have, if it doesn't happen, or we don't want it to happen, I think we should have the courage to say, hey, that's not going to happen. You know, she was appointed to do a job, we have a similar responsibility. And, you know, Justin, and I've said it to a number of people, I don't have the statute, Carl could probably tell you what the statutory language is, but there's a statute that describes what a board's responsibility is. And let me tell you something, there's nothing in that statute, the word policymaker never even appears. It talks about approving curriculum. The superintendent doesn't say that's going to be the curriculum, the Board of Education has to say that, right? So, I, I don't want to get into a debate with people about this, I'm just telling you, I think you're right. I think that Dr. Aquino has a certain point of view, and, and my colleagues, who at one time were adversaries, we've, we've had this discussion at length. And, and I'm going to say, while some people want to point out our differences, I got to tell you, I think if you haven't heard it, I've heard it, I think we're on the same page on this. I got to tell you. I think, while we may have different ways to get to this, I think, to your point, let's just deal with it frankly, I think you're absolutely right. I think Dr. Aquino has a certain point of view about what board members are to do. That doesn't mean we should dismiss the recommendations in his report, and I'm not suggesting that. And I, and I think, how he thinks on it is not a surprise to me. I mean, I, I'm sure he, I'm sure he looked at us, I've looked at him. I know that's his, that's his view, and he's in the majority. But I'm telling you, if you've got a district that's only graduating 39% of its kids, and they're disproportionately putting African-American men and women into suspensions, and they're filling up our prisons, if you've got a system that, again, before I got here, is putting people in special education classes and they don't need to be here, listen, I don't have any problem looking at the statute and saying, this is my legal responsibility, and I'm going to execute it the way I think, and let the chips fall where they may. I'm doing what I, remember now, each of us took an oath to apply the law. And Justin, I've given you that statute before, again, anybody who's interested in a specific statute, you can talk to Carl back there, he can give you the citation. What I'm saying is vested in the law.
I just want to quickly ask, we spoke with the vice chancellor of the board of regions, who said if there is not some significant change, that mayoral control and receivership is not off the table. Your reaction to board of regions?
I'll say this, because we also had individual meetings with the commissioner and the regions, and she basically let us know, in my, in my meeting, that this report was an indictment on the district, and that it needed to be taken seriously. And I appreciated her saying that, because again, previous reports from different consultants have led to just it being that, a report and a consultant. I also want to backpedal a little bit, because, back to your question, Justin, and some of the stuff that's been said, I personally did not view the report as it saying that commissioners now have to be completely hands-off. I think that there is a level of involvement that is expected of commissioners, including reading, authentically thinking about the decisions that we're making. And I said this to the chancellor and to the commissioner yesterday, that this board has a historical, political way of how they get to their votes. And it's more like, we're going to align ourselves, like, you're going to vote for me, no matter what, I'll vote for you. And it takes away the authenticity of the authentic thinker of each individual coming to a decision that's in the best interest of our students and this district. And that's part of that culture that goes back to board governance, too. That's some of it. And I think what his, I'm taking his recommendations for board governance and training, is that there is some significant training around budgets and policies and decision-making that needs to take place. I'm taking it as that commissioners do need to read and fully comprehend, and if they don't, it's okay to ask questions. I'm the first person to ask a million questions, and I know I drive people crazy, but I feel like that's my job to ask those questions. They're not going to be comfortable. If you're doing your job, like Natalie said, if you are here in the district and you're getting paid good money to do a job, you should be able to answer questions from any of the commissioners at any time. It should not take two weeks, three weeks to get a response for you to dig through what you're doing in terms of work. So I take this report personally very seriously, and I, I'm going to be encouraging my colleagues to look at the recommendations and ask clarity. I went back and I've already met with the distinguished educator, because I had a whole bunch of clarifying questions on the report. I read it three times, there's a highlight, I sent him a message, could I meet with you so I can get some clarity on some of the areas? Because some areas, I think, are up for perception, and that's not always a good thing, because as you can see, we have different perceptions and views. So, I think that, I, I requested a meeting for all of us to meet. I'm hoping that we can all meet with him and get clarity on what he meant by certain parts, and then have a thorough response to the state.
I want to address your question, too. The implications, you're asking the implications of the report and what happens if, right? So I want to preface my response on the fact that as, that the New York State School Board Association advanced a document to SED suggesting that the state's process for evaluating everything from the classroom on up to the superintendent, it's called the DTSDE, ought to have a component that assesses school board and governs, and governance. And the, the New York State School Board Association even drafted the standards that they thought boards ought to be measured against as to whether they are effective, you know, ineffective, needs improvement, okay? The SED rejected that document. I think they need to reconsider it before there's any conversation about changing governance structure. Show boards of education precisely where they're failing, right? According to metrics, in the same way that they use metrics to assess the classroom and the teacher, the principal, you know, all the way up through that, the education process. To even consider receivership for the district, or to consider replacing board members, or switching governance to mayoral control, or some other measure, without an explicit metric, is irresponsible. And I, I don't think that's really what she meant by it, but if that is what she meant by it, she ought to backfill and, and put the measurements in place that ensure that you're not punishing board members that are elected by this community for actions that might be taking place at a different level in the organization.
So, and, and, you know, I think it's unfortunate that we have to, and I, I guess they wouldn't probably use this word, but we have to get threatened in a way where you're going to take control away from, from a seven-member board that's constantly elected by a community to represent them, because we can't get the job done as a collective. I think it's unfortunate that we even have to have that conversation. And for me, you know, I would, on one hand, I understand, because again, we are talking about kids' lives, and every moment is so precious, it's like, what else would you do? As a parent, you continue to fail, we're, we're going to go to drastic measures, which I think mayoral control is a drastic measure. It's unfortunate, because then that takes away the control that the community and parents potentially have, because now it's all going into one entity. And so I'm hoping that we can turn this thing around rather quickly. I know we didn't get here overnight, I know it happened well before January, before me and newer commissioners got on board, but I, you know, we just have to, we have to dig in deep. We got to dig in deep, this is where we're at, and hopefully, we don't have to continue to hear mayoral control as a threat to take away that power.
Let me just say, you all have heard the phrase, words matter, right? And words that, like, reset, because it's so subjective, you don't know what that means. And we've heard different interpretations, and that's unfortunate. Words like indictment, I'm familiar with that term. I'm an attorney. My God, that refers to a criminal process. Why would we use such a phrase, even as abysmal as some of the data is? And Commissioner LeBron is correct, that word was used in my meeting as well. That is not a responsible word to use. It's meant to incite, and it takes people's focus away from the job at hand. I realize it, it may create some sense of urgency, but is there a person who's sitting up here, although some of us may disagree on occasion, who doesn't understand this is an urgent situation? Do you have to use a word like indictment when we're sitting across the way from a building that actually has people in there, some of them without cause? Do we have to use such a word? When it, when it incites rather than informs? There's a lot in the report, and let's go back to that. There's a lot that can inform us. We don't need to incite people in this room about the urgency of the situation. And when you do that, you lose focus. We, you know, I'm saying it a different way, but we must stay focused, put our hands to the wheel, and push this thing forward. And let me repeat, at the sound of it sounding redundant, there is value in diversity, right? Of opinion. And there's value in diversity of experience. And I can tell you, having been on the board for 10 years, this is probably as diverse as it's gotten. But that's, that's valuable, because you get different people talking about how things should be, in different experiences. So, I look forward, and let me just say, I think Dr. Aquino is part of that diversity. My disagreements with him on some things doesn't mean that I can't look at that document, because I'm charged with, along with my colleagues, of helping children and families. I can't get tied up with my two or three disagreements with Dr. Aquino. There's not a member of the board who I think would do that, because we're focused on kids.
Will he be considered possibly as the next superintendent of the school district?
No, he said no. I asked, he said no. I'll, I'll say, he said no, he's here, he's here to do a distinguished educator. Can I just add, though, very quickly, because I know that the word indictment was used, but another scenario that was used that I personally have reflected to a previous, you know, commissioner, I won't name who, but it's the ideology that the building is on fire, and people are walking in and out very casually. So I know that President White is saying that there's a sense of urgency, but I don't see it, and there should be. And I'm telling you, as a commissioner, I don't see the sense of urgency, not from all of my colleagues, but most, and other people who work in the district, I don't see the sense of urgency that needs to be had, because this district and public education right now in Rochester, New York, is on fire. And our kids are burning and suffering for it, and there is no sense of urgency. So I hope that this report gives us a sense of urgency, more so than the media and the community, but the board itself, a sense of urgency.
I think we've pretty much exhausted most of the questions. Thank you very much for coming. If you want to speak to people individually, of course you can. Thanks a lot, have a good evening. Stay tuned, we have a meeting at 5:30 if you're interested.